Please rise with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Please silence your cell phones. Public comment, this is the time for public comments. Counsel may ask questions but may take no action during the public comment section of the meeting, except to ask or direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda. If you are here to make comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is the time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speakers, please speak from the podium, that's where the microphone is. State your name and mailing address so that city staff can respond to you in regards to your comments or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name or address if you do not desire to do so. Do we have any comments from the public? Great, welcome.
Thank you. I have copies for all of you that I'll distribute so you don't have to read while I talk. My name is Kathy Graves and I'm here representing the Siskiyou History Alliance, a group whose current members include the Siskiyou County Historical Society, the Genealogical Society of Siskiyou County, and Wairega Preservation, with interest expressed from other groups in joining us, for example, the Clampers. We've spoken to you on previous occasions of the alliance's interest in occupying the Carnegie Library Building, in which the research collections of the alliance member groups would be housed and made accessible to the public, as well as offering space for other nonprofit groups and their resources. As it now stands, there's limited access to the current alliance members' collections for a variety of reasons, but mostly because of differing days and hours of operation of each of the individual member groups. We want to house the collections and resources in one place, which also gives us access to the volunteers from all the member groups, who would then be able to staff the Research Library and Resource Center more days and hours of each week than are currently possible within each member group alone. We have been studying what other groups similar to ours have done, and are modeling our proposal after the Allen County Public Library Genealogy Center in Fort Wayne, Indiana. What is now known as the Genealogy Center opened as the Indiana History and Genealogy Room of the Public Library of Fort Wayne and Allen County in January of 1961. However, the collection's history predates that time. As early as 1903, the Mary Penrose Wayne Chapter of the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution sought shelf space in the library for the society's lineage books and other historical works. So partnerships were begun very early, which is exactly what the member groups of our alliance have been doing, are doing, and plan to continue doing. The physical area covered by the genealogy center in Fort Wayne has grown several times during the past 50 years, including an expansion that nearly doubled seating capacity and floor space in 1990, with additional renovations in the mid-2000s. The facility has attracted researchers from around the country as they have come to track down family histories. The Allen County Library is now the largest genealogical library in the United States outside of Salt Lake City, and large hotel chains and restaurants have moved nearby to accommodate the people using that facility. Not only has there been an increase in hotel occupancy, but restaurant use, visits and usage of local historic sites and parks has increased as well. This one partnership library has brought hundreds of thousands of dollars to the community of Fort Wayne, Indiana. Although Wairega's population pales in comparison to that of Fort Wayne, their population is about 266,000 and ours is about 7,700. Our proposed occupancy of the old Carnegie Library Building will attract researchers into a one-stop shopping style of experience, rather than what exists now with alliance member collections being spread around various locations. Restoring the old Carnegie Library Building back to being a library and resource center is appealing to us, and has already been met with support of the concept by various members of the public as we have talked about this idea. Many people have fond memories of using the Carnegie Library when it was a library many years ago, and they like the idea of returning the building to its roots. The Carnegie is centrally located, easy to find, is in the historic district, and offers access to local hotels and restaurants, as well as access to historical sites and local parks in and around Wairega. Again, the Siskiyou County History Alliance sees this project as one that will benefit the community at large, the city of Wairega through additional revenue, as well as being a resource that is open to the public. The alliance members have been discussing the idea of a combined genealogy and history research library since 2013. The idea of it being a closed, private library has never come up in any of the discussions we have had. We do not see it and have never seen it as a closed, private research library. We want the public to visit and use the combined resources of the alliance member groups, and this will be made easier by housing the collections all in one place. So again, we are asking you to please let us know when would be a good time for us to submit a proposal to you. And now Dawn East from our group is going to talk a little bit more about the idea of the facility becoming not only a genealogy and history research library, but also a center for nonprofits and their resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say who I am, although I know most of you know me for many reasons. Dawn East, 520 North Oregon Street here in Wairega. And I'm here to talk about the consortium as well as preservation. And most of you are familiar with Wairega Preservation and what it's done. The main thing I want to say again is just to kind of add to what Kathy has said. And again, one of the points I want to make is, we really want to make this an open facility. We want to work with you guys and ladies as, you know, Wairega. And we want to make something that helps work with the city, to help you guys. We want to build something the way you see and what your visions are, as well as ours. Because I think it's a team effort that's going to make this work really well. And so we want to make it really open. I've talked to a number of other outfits and they, "Oh yeah, this is a perfect idea." They're really excited about it. Now, I know there's problems. When we walked into Wairega Preservation Building, the old church, many of you know, as for preservation, what we walked into. One of the things that we came aware of, which was a whole lot of fun, was, you know, the city has always been involved in really making this a city, but it took time. And the church was built in 1880, and you can correct me on this, but the information that I've got, the really formal building department that existed in the city really didn't get go until the early 60s. You know, it's been developed so much since then. Well, all you have to do is come pull back the church, and you could see evidence of that. And I'm sure probably the Carnegie has its things too. In fact, I know, I've been upstairs, downstairs, the basement, I've been everywhere, you know, and whatnot. So when we're talking about our interest for that facility, we understand there's a double interest. There's the interest for the city, what the city needs to do. There's what our vision is. And what we're asking for in making a proposal is the opportunity at your convenience to sit down with the council at some time. We could meet before a meeting or after a meeting or sometime, so we could really throw out our ideas to you. And you could throw your ideas back, so we could really work towards a goal that's going to work for everybody. I hope that makes sense, you know, and like she's saying, we want it to be open. We want it to be a place when people walk down Minor Street, they're going to make a point to be there. Preservation was originally, had a spot on Minor Street. And one of the things we really noticed when we were there, especially all the people from out of town, who would walk down the street, the first thing they'd do is stop and look at the little signs, you know? And we had one right near our little building. We'd walk out, "Hi, are you a visitor in town? How would you like to come in and see what Wairega's about?" And we had a lot of fun, because we met a lot of people from a lot of places around the world that I think we made feel welcome to this wonderful place that we call Wairega. So anyway, we're asking for the opportunity to sit down and talk with you, share our ideas, and see if we can come up with something that meets the needs of Wairega. Thank you.
Thank you. We still have a minute left.
Well, I was going to ask you, I got finished, I can give applause, but I can't ask you too much.
Do you want to plug trivia night?
Thank you, thank you. And we have one more?
Just one more quick. Claudia East, 520 North Oregon Street. I'm also a member of Wairega Preservation, the Alliance, the Genealogical Society, the Historical Society, I wear all those hats. Anyway, yes, Wairega Preservation has a fundraiser, we're a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), as are all of the groups, coming up for trivia night. It is the 12th, and I think the city council might make a great table for trivia. You guys could maybe become trivia champions. Anyway, so I hope that people will know that. One other thing I did want to mention about our goals and hopes for the Carnegie and our vision, and Dawn mentioned it a little bit, and Kathy mentioned it as well, is we want to, the building is big enough, at least from what we can configure for what we have. We do have blueprints that we were able to obtain of the building. We would like to have space available for those other nonprofits in our community to have a spot, maybe they would have a general office or something. So if somebody wanted to know something about one of the Rotary Clubs that doesn't have an office, they might have a place for their brochures, in addition to what the chamber may offer. So we just thought duplication of efforts might be, in that respect, really helpful. And that way there would be an inclusion of the other nonprofits, so we would all kind of have a home, so to speak. So those who would be interested in joining us, in addition to the ones who've already made some, you know, commitment, that is another thing on our plate. We have an interest in wanting to do. Okay, thank you.
Just to start off really quickly, you see why I'm married.
Good choice.
Can you ask where the trivia night is?
Oh, yes, did you want to tell us when and where the trivia night is?
Oh, it's at Wairega Preservation, 300 Lynn Street, the little yellow church building. It is, the doors will open at 6:30 on the 12th of this month. We've got a week.
12th or 17th?
Probably 17th.
The 12th is Saturday.
Let's see, today's the 10th.
I'm sorry, I've got too many things going on in my head. So you can find us on Facebook.
Okay, the 12th is Saturday.
Yeah, no, this is on a Thursday.
So it's the 17th.
Seventeenth.
But we need another chain of really smart people.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Speaking of smart people.
Former, yes, former council member, Richago.
Members of city council, city staff, public, my name is Rob Uchego. I'm a retired politician.
Recovery.
So I'm here to rectify a problem that I had. I've given every city council I've been on a book. And, you know, the last book I gave, which was a very good book by the way, was on managing city budgets. So I thought, you know, I need to give them some book. And 10 pages into this book, which I'm now four fifths of the way through, it's thick. I found a book to truly, I think, worthy of the city council. As tempting as it was to give you Dr. Seuss books, I did.
Did you think it'd be over read level?
So what I found, and what I bought for each of you, is a book called Thinking Fast and Slow. It's by Daniel Keniman. And Daniel Keniman is just some fly-by-out guy. He's a Nobel Prize winner. 2002, he won the Nobel Prize in Economics. And mind you, this is from, was given to a guy whose background is in psychology.
Oh wow.
So a psychologist, won the Nobel Prize in Economics.
Wow, interesting.
And the theory was behavioral economics, which I just love. I mean, it's just fascinating to see how people make decisions, and what they base it on, and sometimes how wrong they all can be, very, very smart people. Including this guy, he admits his own faults in this book. And I thought, you know, this is just amazing, and I learned a lot from this book. And with your permission, I'd like to give each of you this book. May I do that?
Of course, approach the venue.
I'm going to do this, I'm going to do this one at a time.
Do we have to report this?
How much time do we have?
I have a way of remedying that situation also. I purchased these books with monies that I received from the city of Wairega as I was in that chair. So is that a gift or not? That's up to you.
As long as it's not over $50.
Each one, so, to Debbie.
Yes.
"I believe this book will be enlightening as it reinforces and strengthens your beliefs in truth and honesty, which I firmly believe you have and you always displayed while I was on council, with useful tools to apply. Signed by me."
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's one.
Is there going to be tests?
Book report.
Your first reaction will be fast.
To Norm. "To a man with a very large heart, I hope you find solace in this book, as it will give you more power to forgive a generous heart for some decisions you will need to make."
Wow, you've really thought these over.
Yes, he did.
I've got three more to go. Sorry, this page got bent. What is this page on? Ooh, okay. To Norm. This was too easy. "You're a numbers guy, and this is a numbers guy kind of a book. Just try not to drool over the pages." Two more.
Two more. Three down, two to go.
Paul.
Yes, Rob.
"This is the perfect book for you. A closet professor at heart. Some people might not know this about Paul, but he really is an academic. Each chapter will be a pleasure for you to read." All right, if anyone's doing the math, I'm almost done. Joan. "To every person's every person, that's you. This book will only serve to strengthen your message as you continue to lead Wairega and Siskiyou County into the future. Signed." All right, that's my gift to you all. Please read it. If even one of you reads it, you'll be powerful to all of you. That's how strong this book is. You'll remember things that I'll tell you, causal inferences, regression to the mean, those are little buzzwords, keys in the book somewhere. Enjoy it.
Wow, how do we follow that up? Thank you, Rob.
You gave him permission to approach a patient. I'm hoping that he doesn't have to ask his wife that like at dinner. Joanne, can I permission?
Okay, discussion, possible action. Consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion, or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. The city manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. A, approval ratification of payments issued from December 21st through January 10th, 2019. And B, approval of minutes of the meeting held December 20th, 2018. What are the wishes of the council?
I would like to pull one A if we can get them answered, since Reta's not here. We'll see what we can do, but we'll go from there.
Okay, anything else? Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve one B then, as a stand.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Okay, we have a motion, the second, to approve item one B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, Wayne, item one A. Approval ratification of payments.
I can get back to you on that. I was just answering.
Yeah, that's probably what's going to be said, so I mean.
Reta's not here, unfortunately.
What's the question? So actually, this is, I think, that Matt Hocken answered. The, on page six, says Belcorp Ag LLC Vacuum Collection System for 9,066, 89. Do we know what that is?
Belcorp. That would have been the vacuum collection system pickup for the eight-wheel drive Ralph mower that we purchased on our budget about three years ago.
Aren't those spending little critters, aren't they? Holy cow. And then, right after that, we have Campora. I was going to ask, we did, I see, obviously change over something to Campora. How is that going in reflection? Does anybody know that? I said that might be a red thing there too. Oh, and I know we were talking about comparing prices on different propane outfits, and have we made any changes, more changes on that that we know of? I see that we have something on that for Campora, but I know we're looking at.
I don't believe that's a change, but I would need to check with Reta.
Okay, we'll check with Reta then.
Yep.
One other one. And on perfection planning, when we're doing all the breakdown on hers, on everything that she does, it says the Green Horn gates locking. We know obviously she does that.
Yeah.
Is she not, she is obviously doing the greenway too, correct?
No, we are no longer locking the greenway at the central.
We're not locking it?
No, we're not. By request of the owner of the title.
Oh, right, good.
People get locked in.
Yeah, they were getting locked in, I know.
Correct, so that remedied that situation. The title company approached us and asked if we would leave it open.
And then what is right below that, what is WWTP?
Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Under breakdown.
Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Okay. I didn't realize you did that. Okay, that's it.
I'll make the motion that we approve ratification of payments issued from December 21st through January 10th, 2019.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I guess I have a second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same say? Okay, motion carries. All right, item number two, discussion, possible action. "Approve a supplemental appropriation in an amount not to exceed $40,000 for purposes of website, migration, or software and host services. Authorize the staff to solicit proposals pursuant to a request for proposals or solicitation of quotes through joint powers authority."
And I actually have a little bit of background information for you on what we've currently been working on and how long we've been working on it. So I actually have a presentation for you guys. It's very short and brief, but I just figured having pictures to kind of go back with what's going on, just because this has been a frequently talked about item. We actually have been working on this since the very end of August, beginning of September, in finding out what companies are out there that actually focus on municipalities and actually work directly, and that's pretty much their sole source of customer base, is a municipality. So the team has been created by myself, Gabriel Holden, Renee Hoyington, and Reta has been a large part of it as well. With my background of my MBA in project management and retail management, I have, I've done a lot of product management, so that's why they chose me as a team lead to be able to be working on this. Having the business background that I do, it makes it almost a good fit. So as you may know, the original company that we worked with for our website was Wrinkle Dog. And they were a local company, and we started the design with them in 2008. And if you can imagine technology back in 2008 to where it is today, you know that there's been leaps and bounds that have been made. And so for website design, it's the exact same thing. We've been on the same platform for almost 10 years. So as you can imagine, your smartphone from 2008 couldn't do anything or close to half of what it can currently do today. So website design, the HTML protocols, all that information that we are currently utilizing has almost been stagnated by what is currently available. So Wrinkle Dog was bought out by Impressions Design and Marketing. And they unfortunately, we've come across a handful of issues with them, retrieving our own data, we've had certificate problems, we've had contact issues. So, and that was after we started looking into another company for, because we knew that we were going to have to migrate the website eventually, because we just had to have a new design, we had to keep up with technology, we had to keep up with, you know, interface with the citizens and moving things forward. So Impressions Marketing and Design, when I went and looked at what they actually do, they actually do a lot of, I guess it's marketing material. So they'll design you a Facebook page, they'll make you a business card, they'll do promotional flyers, they'll do event flyers, they'll do photography, they'll do wedding photography. But I didn't see anything for municipality website design or hosting in any way, shape, or form. So that capability, they might have it, but it's not a strong suit, and that's something that we need. We need something that focuses on transparency, that focuses on the ability to keep up with what new regulations there are for cities to abide by. There's a handful of things that they don't focus on. So this is currently what our website looks like. There are a handful of design flaws for those of you who use it regularly, get frustrated with certain things. So the implementation of the new items, these are examples of what Civic Plus does. So the company that we've been looking at is called Civic Plus. And they're, they have more than 3,500 municipalities that they work with on multiple different levels. And their sole customer base is municipality-driven. And so the things that they have in their web hosting product, it's called Engage, they have specific models or modules, and then they have specific features. And the thing that we are excited about is the features, they're kind of like an all-in-one stop shop. So you don't have third-party vendors for job hosting. You don't have a third-party vendor for paying. You don't have a third-party vendor for all these different items, then you have to learn that interface along with the new website. So it's all basically an inclusive purchasing bundle, I guess, if you will. The main things, the main focuses are, you know, citizen-driven. We want to have them be able to find their answers on the website versus having to either come to our counter or have to make a phone call because they can't find it. And so having this as a, I guess, a front-facing cloud-based entity, this is going to help that tremendously. So these are some examples of sites that they have already built. And I just like them, one for the simplicity sake. So they, obviously you can see they have the headings, so where, you know, as you hit our, I guess, menu bar, and if you don't get it right, you lose it, and you have to go back and get it right and lose it, and you've got to keep going back. These, when you actually hit on them, they open up into a huge menu that you can't get out of essentially until you move out of that entire box. So just the whole design piece behind it is actually very, very, very user-friendly. And here's two more cities that they use. And I actually utilized a city, like I polled California cities, and I also polled Oregon cities, that were from 11,000 people and less, to see what cities were as close to us as possible that also utilize this exact same platform.
It's pretty obvious we need to go on field trips.
The closest one I found is actually in Oregon, at Eagle Point. That's the closest one that I found that utilizes it, is Eagle Point, Oregon. So the additional modules that were briefly spoken about in here are Civic HR and Civic Clerk. And the reason that those would be additional modules is, it would wind up saving our HR coordinator so much time by having these, this particular for her, for the additional programming. Right now, we've figured out she averages about 24 hours to onboard somebody, one person. With the programming that this can provide, but Engage also already has a huge portion of this included, but this would be an add-on item. So this would allow her to simplify so much of her position. Along with the Clerk, the Clerk is already partially provided in the Engage packet. Along with the Clerk, the Clerk is already partially provided in the Engage packet as a base model. But this is like the, the supermodel of Engage and the supermodel of those two items. They're additional items that you can build out. So, this isn't, this is, this is just like future information to basically allow you to see that there is room for growth within the same company. It's not a matter of that, okay, we're gonna pick a stagnant company, we're gonna go with them, we're gonna buy from them, and then ten years down the road, we're gonna start this all over again. These companies are, this particular company is actually progressively moving forwards, progressively expanding.
Question, those are two additional modules, how much extra are those?
Those, unfortunately, because they take in part, I, they can only give me quotes on what has been, I guess, purchased by another close to similar company, or city, rather. And so, the, like, right now, from the information and the dollar figure that they've given me, the implementation is roughly thirty-five hundred dollars. And then there's an annual fee, but the annual fee is because we just went into a new year, I don't know those. And then, I believe Clerk was right along the same timeframe. And I do know also that they do bundling packages, so if we say did Engage and within X amount of time wanted to, knew we were gonna add the other products, they could give us a, a discounted pricing break. But I don't know what that is.
What is the chance of us adding on like right away, or is this gonna be something down the road that we probably won't need for down the road?
So, timeframe-wise, the website build itself is about a five-month build.
Okay.
So, in, in keeping that in mind, there's a lot of stuff that goes into migrating that. You know, we need to make sure our forms are all up to date, or our applications are all up to date. We need to make sure our content, what we're gonna be moving. We want to get into a capability of, um, it's called OCR, so it's optical recognition of characters when you're, when you go to do a search. So, instead of trying to search through all of our agendas the way that you have to monotonously do it right now, you'd actually be able to type in, I want this item from this agenda, and it'll pull it up. So, there's a multitude of capabilities, but switching all that data over, it does take time. So, obviously, that's gonna be something that would be a conversation down the road, but it would be something that would be so cost-effective for us to be able to be more productive in our daily use of Renee's time, of anybody who would be doing planning commission, cause that's part of what Civic Clerk can do. So, planning commission, even being able to do certain things with city council meetings, like live agenda, live vote-taking, live attendance, like the whole nine yards could be done from an iPad. Sitting right here, taking votes, taking the whole thing from right here. And so essentially, the minutes are immediately done, and they're already ready to go. There's a whole, there's a plethora of things that could be done with this, which is why it's so exciting, because it's a progressively forward-moving company.
Excellent, where are they out of?
They are out of, um, Manhattan, Kentucky.
I didn't know there was a Manhattan.
He actually, he actually had to, um, like, he goes, no, no, not that one, the other one. I'm like, the other one? He goes, yes, there's one in Kentucky. But yes, his name is Jordan Keynes, and he is, um, he's fantastic. He's very, very helpful, he's answered all of our questions. Um, we've, one of the gals who's actually built the suite for Civic Clerk used to actually, um, be a city clerk herself. So, she has helped with a lot of the development, and, um, we actually had the, the luxury of having her on our demo when, so she was the one explaining to us the capabilities of these products. Um, it's been, it's been quite interesting, the amount of knowledge just in the last, what has it been, five months? From September till now, working on it and gaining and seeing the different companies and seeing what is capable and what's out there.
Do you think this has the capabilities of how, saving us like how much money? I mean, do you have any roundabout figure, or what could save us?
I don't think we're there yet, but it, it could be significant. Um, it, it's hard to, I mean, there's a couple things, when you're approving processes like that, there's sometimes where you can do it directly, like the hours in HR being reduced. And then some of them are a lot more difficult, for example, agenda preparation.
Right.
Um, it crosses so many different, uh, things, and actually, it may not decrease, for example, the amount of work that the city clerk does initially, because we'll be learning the new system and that sort of thing. So, but, you need to keep up with technology and use it. We know that we're gonna be in a competitive market with, for employees going forward, and so, you wanna be able to maximize their utility as much as possible.
And on that, it has been able to shift, like, one of the things is park and rec reservations, which would be able to technically shift job duties off of somebody's desk, which could potentially free them up for more productivity. So, there's a hand, like I said, there's a handful of things that are going to be, um, implemented in this, that we have the ability to design, that right now, being able to say, it's going to save us X amount of dollars. I can't give you that figure like Steve stated. However, the productivity of, um, you know, being able to shift those certain responsibilities, or being able to see that reducing the amount of hours for onboarding it currently takes to what Renee will be able to do with all those extra, that extra time, that is value in itself.
So, under the fiscal impact, Willow, we're looking, you're looking at, we would be looking at twenty-five thousand dollars for the software and the migration, five thousand dollars annually for, just to, just to maintain.
So, it's maintenance, any kind of current, like, software updates that need to be required. Um, there's all of the help, so it's civic help or the training or, and, um, they have a full training suite that they do as well. And you can, you have that in multiple different ways, you can have them onsite, you can do webinar. They also make stuff specific to the city of Wyrica. So, instead of having to go and get a YouTube video, which you don't really know because that city didn't have what you have, it actually, they will create videos specific to the city of Wyrica.
And there's a cost for that?
That is included.
Okay.
That is part of, that is part of your maintenance cost and your initial cost.
And then thirty-five hundred dollars you talked about was for?
The add-on modules, the add-on products.
We were talking about two add-on modules, right? And would that, would you want that funded, would that need to be funded now as they build, or does that?
That is just, yeah, that's just future.
Okay, okay.
I was just trying to inform you that there is capable, there is capability of expanding with these products, so it's not a matter of, like I had stated, oh, well, here we are ten years down the road, and now we have to change again. So, these products are currently expanding as they sit and growing. And so, as a background of what this company does is, if they see a need, like, an HR module that's fully robust, they have acquired that company and bring it under the Civic umbrella and operate it as normal, but it's now under the Civic umbrella versus being a third-party vendor. So, they have acquired additional companies to keep them competitive in their own market.
How long has this company been around?
They have been doing this for twenty, over twenty years.
That's crazy, no. Twenty-plus years. Okay, sounds good. Um, so, Rheta's not here, but where would this be in the budget? Does this come out of IT? Do we have it budgeted?
No, this will come out of reserves.
Reserves?
Yes.
And we have it in reserves?
Yes.
So, twenty-five, uh, thirty looks like about, um, thirty, thirty-five thousand?
Yeah, we were looking at getting authorization to go up to forty, there's usually stuff that pops up that.
The motion would be for forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I saw that. But it looks like that would be thirty immediately.
Sorry, it's a, it's a, uh, so it's the initial twenty-five, and then you're in a four-year contract, so the initial twenty-five, and then you have, yeah, so then you have your, um, maintenance fees for the three years following. And then at the end of your contract, they actually do a full redesign on your whole site. So, even if you don't renew with them, they'll redesign your whole site for you at the end of your contract.
So, we're basically tied in for three years, though?
Four.
Four years.
Yeah, so you have your initial, your initial bill, your initial year, and then you have your, yes, correct.
So, if for some reason, though, what isn't written up in the contract, or if they do not meet their obligations, what is, how, can we get bail out of this situation?
To my knowledge, with the buying through tips in the consortium, um, that they have done basically the RFP and their due diligence, and they would be held viable through the consortium for the lack of the finished job.
Okay.
So, the only, the, I can see on the recommendation is that, um, before it talks about pursuant to the RFP, we need to delete the word "to." "To solicit proposals pursuant to," not "to solicit proposals to pursuant to."
Where, where are you?
I'm on, uh, the recommendation on the second page.
Okay.
In the last paragraph that talks about the RFP.
A supplemental appropriation for purposes of website migration, for software, you meant "to"?
And hosting services.
Oh, yeah.
Authorize the staff to solicit proposals.
Right.
"To pursuant to," that's, we need to take out one of those words.
So, we'll take out the first one.
You are a teacher, that's right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So, take out the "to" and then "pursuant to" a request, I agree.
Then the motion, then, that would be the motion, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Is that, is that your motion?
That's your motion.
That's, okay, so, my motion is that the council approve a supplemental appropriation for purposes of website migration for software and hosting services. Authorize the staff to solicit proposals pursuant to a request for proposals or solicitation of quotes through joint powers authority.
Okay, do I have a second?
Also.
Okay, we have a.
If it took the amount of appropriation, that would be great.
Uh, forty thousand, amount not.
Up to.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, amount not exceeding forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
I have a second.
Okay, and we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you too, Kim.
Yes, thank you both.
And Rheta.
All, everybody.
Yeah, good work, good job. Okay, next agenda item. Okay, discussion possible action, adopt a resolution authorizing an amendment to Willow's, uh, Willow Martindale's limited-term employment agreement. So, that's our city manager.
Yes, yeah, we're not making Willow do that. So, uh.
Give her a presentation, come on.
So, about, about a year ago, we entered into a one-year limited-term contract with, uh, with Willow. And at the time, we thought we would get through the classification study and then also sort of regularize the, the duties. Uh, code enforcement took a little bit more time during the first year, and then we still are working on the overall classification plan, including, uh, working, uh, regularly with, um, the YEA, the miscellaneous group. So, what we'd like to do is, instead of going that direction, is to extend this contract and basically make this contract subject to what other management employees are eligible for. The benefits were already in there. Um, the way that the original contract was written, I need to come back to you, not to extend the contract, but to make, uh, her eligible for things like the cost of living adjustment. And, uh, merit increases are what people sometimes call step increases. But that actually is what we're, we're doing. We expect during this eighteen-month period, we will complete the rest of the analysis and, you know, kind of, kind of go from there. So, this is kind of a cleanup item and, but, something we need to do.
Excellent. And, and I did not know that Willow had an MBA, but I do know that you've done an excellent job. We've needed a code enforcement officer for a long time, and now I see you're doing other things as well as that, so. Do we have any questions or a motion?
Before your motion, on, on line eighteen, um, I think the wording needs to be changed, says as, uh, on seventeen, it says, and I've talked to, I've mentioned this already. "As may be necessary for convenient to effect the purpose of this resolution." Now, "effect" is a noun, and I think the word we wanna use there is "affect," that's a verb.
Affect, yes.
Okay? And then, as we go down to line twenty-four.
Who's gonna correct our English?
Yes, I am.
I've got, I told you. Yep, no, it's just, I, I just wanna make sure we get her covered.
So, let me make sure that I, I, cause I don't have line numbers online, but you said on, on line seventeen, it should be affect, A-F-F-E.
Section one, the one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh line down. I, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that should be affect. Cause affect is usually a verb, effect is usually a noun.
Right.
That follows a verb.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Why do you press, I'm gonna correct you.
I agree, though, I think it should be.
You should've heard my fifth graders. You should've heard my teachers when I went through their letters and said, no, 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 listen.
Are you asking if we're smarter than a fifth grader?
That's a TV show.
That's Jeff Foxey, that's.
Yes. Isn't that a TV show?
And then, uh, section two, one, two, three, fourth line, it says, uh, "This resolution, comma, the application thereof shall not be effected." There, but shall remain in full, and I believe that should be affect.
Affect.
Okay? And, see, and then "effect" was used one other area that it, it looked fine, and those are the only two that I really saw. And that's just to make sure that we don't have to come back and do it later if there was an issue.
Okay. We can make those, uh, two changes.
Sorry, Steve, I told you I was gonna.
We got affect, affect.
Yeah, I just didn't get to read it yet, so, yeah.
No, that's okay. I didn't, I didn't blindside, just like, I was just looking at it.
Yeah.
It looks good. Okay, thank you for that. Now, do I have other questions, or do I have a motion? Yes.
Okay, uh, Willow, on the code enforcement of the re-debates, when do you plan to start on that this coming year, early in May then, or something?
Oh, no, I plan on starting in March.
March, good.
With outreach and, um, especially like for alleyways, cause a lot of people don't know that they actually own their alleyway. There's only a handful in the city that the city actually owns. Um, so, I will be like, for example, the two really bad violators are the ones over off of Nap, and, um, can't think of the other street over there right now.
A street near now?
No, it's the one right to the north of Nap. Um, thank you.
Pioneer.
And so those, thank you. So, those two are really bad violators. So, I wanna invite, basically send the residents of, I'll do one street first and then the next, next, but invite them basically to, um, an evening where I can explain to them that, you know, you are in fact ownership of your, of your alleyway, you need to make sure that this is maintained. If you're not, these are the procedures that are gonna wind up happening from the code enforcement desk. And basically, um, inform them, because last year, about this many people that owned an alleyway took care of it, whereas I wanna see more compliance. There was a ton of compliance this year compared to there ever was prior, but, um, I think that we can do better.
I also have a question, yesterday I was on Main Street, on South Main Street, the old Food for Less building is fenced off, and the weeds are growing up through the cracks, and it looks horrible. So, if there's anything you can do, write a letter to ask, that needs to be cleaned out.
Well, Scott Hodson from PAC Trust, and he does usually hire somebody two, a few times a year, but he's in Portland.
Okay.
That, that owns that and forty-eight other Safeways, like that.
Yeah, and we have, we have some contacts.
Yeah, he's, he's a guy to work with, Scott Hodson.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other question is, um, do you go around the periphery of the city, the outside boundaries of the city, to make sure that we got enough breaks that we don't get fires coming into the city?
I go, so, especially like out on Highway Three, heading out to Philippi Lane. So, that's one of the main spots that I go in that I hit. Um, a lot of those are large ranch parcels, and they actually have had, for example, Dustin Brown Landscaping out there. I've had, uh, Brian Peters, or Peterson, Peters out there. Um, with him doing his portion, I had him doing the large one that is right on the north side of the, um, Discovery Street subdivision, the very top. Um, I, those are pieces that I am focusing on, as far as like a fuel break within the, say, the forest up between, um, up above Green Horn in here. Um, I've gone to a fire safe council meeting, I know that, I believe it's a, the Craigie project that's being worked on.
That's one of the projects that we're working on.
So, I know that that project is in the works, and it is being funded through federal dollars to basically create a fuel break. Um, but as far as the individual, or rather, private property owners, to make sure that their parcels are within, um, the municipal code standards for making sure that they have their forty-foot or their, um, entire parcel weed whacked, that is something that, um, you know, like this year, I got, who's the very south end of town?
Newtons.
Yes, I got the Newtons. They actually wound up using a swather to take down the majority of all of their weeds. Um, so, I am utilizing as much information and driving around as possible to see where we have, uh, people who aren't complying and hounding them as much as possible, even down to having fines. I think this year, we had three people in here with surmountable fines because they weren't abiding by the weed abatement, and so they wound up getting fines.
I, I think we're getting off an agenda. So, the agenda item is not about it, but thank you, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to get some clarification.
So, any other questions from the council? We have one from the audience, but, hold on.
Okay, just a couple of things. One is, please use the newsletter in our water bill to inform people as much as possible, especially with regards to the alley information. I think that'd be very beneficial, cause I actually read those. And the other thing was, I wasn't aware you wore multiple hats. So, that's good to know when we make these kind of decisions. Thank you.
Okay, and I think we have one question from the audience, just real quick.
Um, when are we gonna get Smarke hired her full-time instead of it being just permanent?
Well, she is full-time, but, uh, yeah, it's a matter of contract. We're coming to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, someday, maybe.
Yeah, we're, we're working towards, figuring out what we're doing long-term, you bet.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I?
To adopt a resolution authorizing amendment to Willow Martindale's limited-term employment agreement.
Start with.
Okay, we have a motion, who is the second? Uh, Nora. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion, uh, anyone against? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, and thank you, Willow.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think that that's the end, we're down to city manager and staff reports. I see we have a few staff. Okay, so I think that that's the end. We're down to city manager and staff reports. I see we have a few staff members here.
We do.
We have Matt and we have Lieutenant Betts.
What, one of the things, I'm, I'm going to, uh, I'm gonna let, uh, Matt give a brief report on the Blue Sky program. But before that, I wanted to mention that we are, uh, looking at a date for the, um, grand opening of the, uh, police station.
Oh, yeah.
And if you could put, I know you don't, I'll have your calendars right now, so we'll check in with you, but right now we're looking at Monday, February eleventh. Uh, and, uh, time is probably ten a.m. So I'll check in with you to make sure that, uh, you know, that's on your calendars and you haven't decided to go to Bali or something like that.
Or Sacramento.
Or Sacramento, right. So with that, I, uh, if I could turn that over to Matt for a bit, and I don't think you have another report other than that. Other, other than, the police department's working really, really hard, uh, to get things going and there was an interruption of the business lines, not nine eleven, or not nine-one-one, if you called nine-one-one, you got through. But a couple of the business lines, uh, were, were perfect if you didn't want to answer the phone today for a little while. Um, but they have been, uh, they're back up as I recall.
Yes.
They are good. That's a good thing. Okay, so, Matt.
Yeah, all right, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, um, as you're all aware, a number of years ago, we, we took on the LED streetlight conversion, which was, uh, a gigantic cost savings to the city. Um, it was over a fifty percent cost savings on that, that, that specific power bill per year by, by that project. And then the return on investment on that was, uh, I think, I believe it was around two and a half years. So we're already well, well past that, true savings at this point, so that paid for the project and we're, we're saving. Um, all along during that project, our hope, Steve and I were talking multiple times about someday getting to solar, someday getting to Blue Sky program. So, if you're not familiar with the Blue Sky Energy Program through Pacific Power, um, it works in, in a manner of purchasing blocks of green power, and green power being wind and solar. So from the farms in the Pacific Northwest, the solar arrays and the turbines, uh, that are tied into the grid. And then you can buy specific amounts of blocks to reach different percentages of that green power for your, your home, your business, or your organization. So, in our case, um, the reason that we're interested in looking at it, and we're not making moves yet, I'm just letting you know that we're, we're getting closer. There is a, a sort of a buy-in to become eligible for the grants that are available through the Blue Sky program. So all up and down Pacific Northwest, uh, Corvallis, Oregon has installed solar panels on two of their fire departments, their city hall. Um, they're, I think, actually number one in Oregon right now for this, the Blue Sky program. So, uh, there's a buy-in per block, I won't get into all of that, the detail for you now. Um, but I will throw the numbers back because I got the report from the, my contact at Pacific Power. Um, so it looks to be around three hundred and fifty dollars a month buy-in, which is an additional cost to our existing power bill uh, for the city. Our, and total, just so you can put that in perspective, and these are rough numbers, they are from Pacific Powers computers this morning. But rolling averages from last year, we paid five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in power, citywide. So we have all of these, this entire page of accounts, all up and down.
That's per year, right?
Per year. And that includes pumping our water all the way from Fall Creek, you know, twenty-four miles of that. You're looking just there at two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year to pump that water so we can drink it, you know. So, it, it seems like a half a million dollars is a lot, a big power bill, but when you're looking at pumping water and then disposing of our wastewater, the wastewater's another hundred and ten. So right off the top, you look at the rest of the bills through the city and they're, you know, facility-wise, there's six, six hundred dollars a year, city hall itself is fourteen thousand a year, things like that. So it adds up very quickly. So our goal is to look toward a little deeper with my contact at Pacific Power in coming weeks, dial these numbers down and I'll bring you back something that, that has that long-term ability to apply, become eligible and apply for grants to get some free solar panels. And, and hopefully, we were, we were thinking, Steve and I in talks, that Pacific Power's really gonna want to see something for this program, for the grant program. They're going to want something in the citizens' faces, you know, completely visible, so they can put their name on it and, and promote their own systems. So, uh, obviously that would be city hall's roof and/or the building here, so. And then from there, um, if, if the project becomes viable, we'd like to continue rolling that. So, I just wanted to let you know, it's been, we've been in talks about Blue Sky. I don't know how many times Steve and I have handed it back and forth from each other's desks.
I don't know either.
You take Blue Sky, you take Blue Sky. Um, so we're there and we're moving, so that was all I just wanted to let you know.
That's great, Councilmember Shatsky, you've talked about that for a long time.
Yeah, I put solar power in in two thousand and eleven, about sixty-five percent of my power. And then in two thousand and thirteen, I liked it so much, I put in another addition to the system, almost another forty-five percent and it covers ninety-five percent of my power. My power bill is almost nothing now.
That's impressive.
How long will it take to get the return on your investment?
I'll get it back within ten years.
Depends on what program you deal, there's different programs.
So I mean, the first one's two thousand and eleven, here we are in two thousand and nineteen, I'm two more years than the first one's paid for.
Yeah. And those, those are the differences in the heavy lifting that I'll be, uh, providing to you, is that the residential versus commercial rates are different and that's kind of stymied our, our further progress, so. There'll, there'll be many, many talks about Blue Sky and solar to come.
Yeah, it's not that we don't use solar at all, we have some telemetry that either it has wind or solar, but they're pretty small panels.
Yeah, yes. That's all I had for today.
Okay, thank you, any questions? All right, well, thank you. Lieutenant Betts, did you want to say anything?
He's looking forward to the.
Steve said it all, right? So, February eleventh, February eleventh, good job.
I'm pleased to see him awake, he's been working hard.
Long, long days, huh?
Yes. So he's, he's cruising right back out of here to, uh, to do his stuff.
You have been working long days, I know you've been working out there every day too, so, thank you for all you've done.
So that'll conclude my report. I did want to announce, just for the, the sake of public consumption, I know we all know this, but the meeting of the, uh, on the seventeenth of this month is canceled and we will have a special meeting to replace that on the twenty-fourth. And we do not have a closed session tonight scheduled, so there won't be one.
Okay, great.
I yield my time.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, time for council reports. Councilmember Bayer, would you like to give yours?
Quick campaign news. And I did go to Colleen Setzer's, uh, retirement party, that was great.
I'm sorry, I missed that, how was it?
Yeah, it was very nice. She had a long stream of people coming and going and, um, she has three trips planned this first year of retirement. So she's hitting the ground running, I think. So that's, my hat's off to her, I wish her the best, she certainly paid her dues. Uh, Tuesday night was LAFCO meeting and I was voted in as vice chair.
Yes, congratulations.
And, thank you. And, um, I noticed there was an ad in the paper for the Serumptimus Dinner coming up in February, so it's always a wonderful organization to support. So I hope everybody keeps that date open for them.
What date?
What date?
I think it was the ninth, but I'm, I think it was the ninth, but watch your, uh, those paper ads, yeah.
Italian dinner dates, it's always fun.
Mm-hmm.
I used to work it.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McColl.
Nice league of, uh, local cities last night. Nice to meet with other, um, with other councils, city managers, kind of see what they're doing and, um, and there were some interesting ideas, so. I want to thank Willow and her committee for, um, making the move forward with the technology because it's, we're behind the times right now.
Yeah, we are, yeah.
But I'm keeping up with those old times.
I'll hold me both.
How about you, Norm? You keep it up?
I'm starting to get buried. First IRS filings today.
Oh, Texas.
But, uh, we all went to the Lola meeting last night, which is very good, to meet with other council members and city officials.
That was fun.
That's it.
Okay. So, Councilmember Keg.
Um, a couple of things, we got, of course, our point in time count coming up, that's, uh, looking forward to working with Lieutenant Betts on that here shortly.
When is that?
That is, yes, I'm also good the date. It actually is the night of the twenty-second of January, but we do, are starting to do an account from the twenty-third to the thirtieth of the homeless activity in, in Juareca and in Siskiyou County, actually. Um, Ed Petches and I, um, have been trying to organize this up and it's, it's, it'll go smooth. Um, it's always tough getting some of the outlining areas to participate. We're, we, we seem to have a, um, easy time to get, um, people to participate here, um, here Juareca, but it's definitely a challenge in some of the outlining areas, you, um, especially like you get places, Tulley Lake and, um, you know, some of those places are definitely more remote, Happy Camp and they don't really participate as much as we'd like them to, so. Getting them on the same sheet of music with us has been a challenge and it will be an ongoing challenge, but, um, it's good though, we're gonna get some accurate numbers. It's gonna be a little challenging this year on that point, just to get full names and more information than we had to last year. So that'll be a, the next challenge. Um, but I think we're very well organized on this situation. I think it's gonna go very smooth and we always need some more help, so anybody that wants to participate. I would be much happy to, um, get you lined out and get us going on that direction, so. Get ahold of me, you, or Joni, um, Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Jones, my favorite. And we will help get, you know, get you in the proper direction to help us, I should say, on this situation, cause it's much needed. There's a lot of funding that can come our direction in this, that we can deal with the, the homeless population, um, in a positive way and hopefully get it going in the right direction to reduce the numbers. But the only way we're gonna get that to happen is if we have, um, the state and federal government's participation in this. And the only way that they find out is how many we have. If we don't participate, let them know that we have these homeless activities, then they don't, so that's the only way we're gonna get the funding, plain and simple.
Do couch surfers count as?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, couch surfers.
Couch surfers count as homeless?
No, they do not.
Oh.
Couch surfing does not count as homeless, if they are in somebody's house.
Education, they do count as homeless.
In education, it does. Would count as homeless, that, they don't count as homeless. That's the, that's the downfall to them. So, yeah, that's a big one, is couch surfing, cause there's a lot of people out there couch surfing that we can't count. Secondly, I think that we should, um, address the situation that we're talking about on the Carnegie Library and I think this needs to be brought up in, in future agenda. So, um, this has been talked about a couple of times now and I think it's now that we start making a move. I actually have a couple of ideas that I would like to throw out there, not now, obviously, but I don't know if we need to bring this up, so will we take the next step to discuss this further? But I definitely need to be brought up in the next, or soon, not maybe next, but very soon, agenda.
I think it'll be a workshop item before it's an agenda item.
I think so, I think it'll be a good workshop item, but we need to address that in a council meeting to bring it up in a workshop.
First thing that needs to happen is the police department needs to get.
Yes, they gotta get out first before we, before we move in.
That's true.
Um, other than that, like I said, we did the Lola meeting, the League of Local Agencies, and that was awesome. Um, other than that, I'm looking forward to this next year, I know so, getting some positive changes in Juareca. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, the Lola meeting was great. Then, for those of you that don't know what Lola is, it's the League of Local Agencies. It used to be our local league of cities, but we do have, uh, like, like Chastina is not, um, an incorporated city and neither is McLeod nor Happy Camp. So we always want to be inclusive rather than explosive and so we include everyone and everyone's equal, um, there. The purpose of the meeting is quarterly and we did volunteer and weed, uh, three months ago when they had it there. And we've, we had the meeting here, I think it was two years ago, so we alternated around to different cities. We had forty-one people here for a local business, uh, we had it down at the Land Bar Bistro. So that's significant for a local business, um, bring it in and, um, and it was a really positive meeting, as everyone said here. So I was happy to help organize that. Um, also I had the Local Transportation Commission meeting, uh, the day before yesterday and I've got the agenda here if anybody wants to, like, a little light reading here. With the NAPs, we had Caltrans come in and they're talking about, um, some projects in South County. And I understand they're going to be coming to our next, uh, our next city council meeting and talking about the Main Street project, is that correct? Twenty-fourth?
I haven't confirmed that yet.
Okay. Well, anyway, they were there, they, they do want to come and talk to us about all the details, so.
They've been surveying.
Yeah, they are surveying. Those of you that have seen the surveying teams out there on Main Street, and it's not just Main Street. It also wraps around, um, the north and the south end of town, the, the streets that feed into Main Street. So that's gonna be an exciting project, but that's a few years out. However, they are starting all the planning and the environmental documents and they want to make sure that we're all on board before they start that. Okay, uh, City Selection Committee was last night, right before Lola and we did, uh, the, we made the appointments. So the City Selection Committee consists of all the mayors of all the different cities and we nominated and elected, uh, or appointed, I should say, Debbie to LAFCO. She's been on it now for four years, right? And now she's vice chair and we're really proud of you.
Which is a good thing because the night before they, LAFCO nominated me vice chair, so.
It was perfect. It was a little backwards, but it's okay.
Timing's a little off.
It's okay because that's the way the rules and regs go and so you're, you're safe. I went out as the chair of LTC, which is the Local Transportation Commission, the night before. I, uh, served that twice now in, in my four years. And so now it's, uh, the county and the cities alternate, so it's going back to the county. So Brandon Chris will be the chair and Lori Flick will be the, the vice chair, uh, from the cities from Evan. Um, the Northern California League of Cities, um, so we meet monthly on teleconference and the next meeting is next Monday. Uh, and then coming up, and you didn't mention it, so the new council members, the new mayors and council members meeting is going to be next week in Sacramento, where you go down and they teach you all about how to do a good job as a council member.
Yeah.
Um, and I'll be there as the, our representative, uh, for Northern California on the, uh, Building Community and Economic Development Policy Committee. And I believe Councilmember Bayer is gonna be on the Revenue and Taxation Committee.
Fun stuff.
Fun stuff, yes.
Steve, Steve told me my name, he refers to me to Gavin Newsom if I'm good.
And Steve, Steve sits on the Public Works Committee. So it's, uh, it's beneficial to have your mayor as the chairman or the president with that cause you get lots of appointments, if that's a good thing. Uh, but at least we have, we have representation in Sacramento and my, my philosophy is if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And if you're at the table, you can bring money back and you can bring projects back, that's, that's what I worked on. Um, also sadly, I attended, uh, Glenn Bowman's Celebration of Life last Saturday. He, he's, uh, was a resident of Montague, but I think many of you know him, he used to own Chastity Valley Meets, wonderful, wonderful man, very active in Rotary for many years. And he did, he and his wife Becky, um, uh, did a lot of the functions, catered a lot of the functions here in town, so he will be greatly missed.
Can I point out one thing about Glenn that, that is light and makes me smile every time I think about him? And I was in Rotary with him, Montague Rotary, and every time, every vote, he would always vote, no. And he did it on purpose with a smile on his face because he was that kind of a jokester, but he was a great guy.
And I wanted everybody to think about what their votes were.
Yes.
And then the other thing I've been working on is the Rural Cities Working Group, and I think I've told you about it before. But if this is the whole purpose, and we're in a formation committee right now, but the whole purpose of this is to give small cities like ours a bigger voice in Sacramento. Right now, the city of Juareca goes down to Sacramento and we're very, very small potatoes. But, uh, we are organizing over a hundred cities throughout the state of California and those hundred cities will have a much larger voice in Sacramento on rural issues. So I've been working really hard on that. Thank you, Steve, he's been helping and helping to staff that. It's mostly done on the phone, but while we're at Policy Committee, uh, next week, there will be a face-to-face meeting. So those are some of the things that we're working on. And I think that's it, unless anyone has anything else to add. Okay, thank you, meeting adjourned.